This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the city of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Engagement and the list that you made, the list was a little bit longer, but you hit the big ones on it. And I guess I would want to point out that just because those are, I mean, one of the things would be to add resources to be able to get to some of those things sooner. Just because they're there doesn't mean we're not going to get to them if we don't have a position. So, I mean, the, you know, looking at housing rehabilitation and developing policies and procedures around that, that's on my list. I mean, those are things we're going to work on and things we want to get to. So, all those things that were on the list, it's just, you know, the resources we have a little bit, how quickly we're going to get to them. And so, I don't, I want to be very clear that just because those were items that if we had more resources, you know, we would be able to, you know, work on them. It's not that we won't be working on them just because we don't have more resources. It's just a matter of when we're going to be able to get to them and how deeply or thoroughly. So, I appreciate the opportunity to make that clarification. Otherwise, I mean, these are free to talk about it, but the, you know, almost all those ideas are ideas we were already somewhat aware of and we've been working with you as individuals. I think, Jay, the amendments are actually due when?
They're due November 13th, so we push that back well, almost two weeks, about two weeks from the original, from the original date to try to accommodate this, this meeting as well as council member's schedules, because I know a number of you are going to be out at National League of Cities.
And hopefully having a good learning experience for those of you that are going.
So, yeah, November 13th is that date that, you know, if, if you're looking at doing something, either let the city manager or I know about it. That gives me some additional time after that to work with you on, or the city manager, whoever, I'm working on identifying funding alternatives if there's, needs to be, if there needs to be an offset. And then, the public hearing on the budget is scheduled for the 26th of November, and then the, hopefully, action and adoption of the budget, as well as the property tax levy is scheduled for the 27th. And again, push those back two weeks from our original schedule to try to-
Give you time to-
Give you some time to work through these things.
But I would point out, you don't have to wait till the 13th.
Yes. Please don't wait till the 13th.
You don't have to wait till exactly the 13th to say, hey, we all want to work on these. I mean, we've already had some of those conversations, so we encourage you to bring those conversations to develop whatever amendments that you're thinking about. But, but the deadline is the 13th.
Right. And I just wanted to add something else, and this isn't as much on the amendment side, but this is kind of the, the tone of what we've been hearing from all the different department directors, and that is really regarding our capacity as a community and the services that we're, that we're delivering, but that we, we ought to have more support for. And we've heard that, I think, consistently through all the budget presentations, and whether it was IT, or EMS, or the parks, and the, and the police. Each department has, I think, made a very clear case as to, you know, the fact that we're a growing community, and we've really kind of hit that level of, of doing more with less. And, and so I think that is a really strong conversation that we need to have as a community, which is, you know, what are our expectations? And, you know, that especially when we looked at the, the crime rate and the numbers around that, and how, and how important community policing is, and we looked at EMS especially. But, but really, all the departments, IT was also another one. And we just saw today from our tour at the water treatment facility, that, you know, automation is what's going to help with, with staffing as well. So, it's, it's part and parcel of that. So, I'm hopeful that as a council, but also just generally in our community, that we're having a conversation around that, and how, and what that looks like in the future, in terms of whether we need to work with our community to find more resources to make sure that we're succeeding. So-
Well, you know, just picking up on that a little bit, Andrew is, I'm sure Jeff, Jeff knows the number, but, you know, when we did the renovation at the wastewater treatment plant, I think we were able to eliminate what, three or four positions through that. But what, what didn't probably take, get taken into consideration as much as it probably should have, was the additional burden on IT that came from that renovation.
There were hundreds of-
Hundreds of-
Of switches and technology changes that were made to the plant.
That all, that were all integrated, but we didn't add any staffing to IT to maintain and support all of that. And so, if Bob were here, he would tell you all about that. But, you know, that was, in retrospect, was that something where, you know, we should have figured something out? Maybe we only eliminated three IT positions and added, or three wastewater positions and added one to IT? Maybe we should have, in retrospect, but we, we didn't.
We're, we're adapting to the speed of change as well.
But, so those, you know, that, again, just hits that technology need, that so much of what we do to try to, to, you know, reduce staff in one area, then increases the need on the IT side of things, just sort of.
Or, or the cameras. I mean, we've gone from, you know, zero to, I don't know how many cameras are out there, but, I mean, tens of, if not hundreds of cameras. And each one of those has to be installed, connected, and then replaced, because they wear out. And so, we're already, you know, and yet then all of that falls on IT. Right. So, and yet, it's what's allowing, you know, community services and police in particular to be able to be much more efficient. So, anyway, I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Yeah, Terry?
Is it possible, then, that we ask, rather than asking us to come back with an amendment, finding the money in the budget to maybe support the IT program a little stronger this year? Is it possible to ask the staff to try and find that money? If, and if it's just not there, and you've gone through every, you know, means to find it, then, then we don't need to push it anymore, but-
So, my response to that would be, you've received my budget, and you hear from me and everybody that that was, you know, it's a very, very high priority for us, and there was not more added to it based upon, you know, the review and what, you know. So, you know, when I bring a budget forward, I mean, I heard all those requests, one-on-one, you know, from every one of the department directors. You guys learned more about those, you know, historically, we haven't shared quite as much in terms of how, what those needs are this year. You saw a lot more about those. But, but we go through a six-week, almost eight-week process, maybe, where, where Jay and I are sitting down with every department, and we're talking through every one of those requests. And in addition to, you know, things that I've heard from the council, and from the community, and bids, or, you know, I mean, lots, input comes from a lot of different places. And, and then the manager makes a recommendation after hearing all those. And so, you know, at this point, balancing all those various needs, you know, there was not additional resources recommended this year for IT.
And last year, we did-
Last year, we did-
Last year, we did, we're able to add a position for, for IT.
And we're just now-
Been a high priority.
And that was a mid-year thing, but we're just now hiring that position. So, so we want to see how that settles in before-
See the hat on the, should be the city's top of the year.
And, yeah, so, and on the engagement piece, well, there are other, I mean, Jeremy, you pointed out some of them, but, you know, on the engagement piece, there's a Poco software, which is a very strong community engagement platform that we first got to use and see with the Creative Economy Week. And for those of you actually that are going out to the national conference, the Poco folks are there, and they are actually the conference's primary sponsor for community engagement platforms. And so, Pat Cannon is actually looking forward to seeing all of you that are going out there and actually demonstrating it for you and showing you some of it.
And what, how? Like a booth somewhere?
Yeah, so in the-
The vendor area.
We can go to the vendor area if you look for Poco, and say, Pat, to Pat Cannon, that Dale mentioned you should stop by.
For a free drink.
No, but not that, and not there, but for a demonstration, for a demonstration of the product, and kind of get a sense of it. But there, again, one of the things we're struggling with is, it's a great platform, but it's going to take resources to run it, to tend to use it. And how do we incorporate that with what we're doing? But, but we're, we're going forward, you know, with that. You know, the, Jeremy, you mentioned the sustainability goals, and there's some very tangible projects coming forward, you know, as it relates to the, you know, the, that. So, there's some things that are changing, and things that are moving forward, hopefully consistent with, and then we made some changes in the communications position, it's much more actively engaged in our social media platforms. And that position was filled with somebody new, and that new emphasis this, this summer. So, we're still ramping up, you know, with what we can do there. So, not everything that everybody would like, and we understand that, but hopefully, you're seeing some progress and movement forward in, in some of these different areas. Well, we still have to be very focused on maintaining and, and being a safe and functional community. Because that's the foundation for all these other things we do, is having a safe and functional community. So, yeah.
Well, if I could share just a couple of things, I think, since we have, you know, for long intents and purposes, a newer council, the budget process is a lot to take in. And I was told on my first year, it's a lot to take in the first year, and still, year six, it's still a lot to take in. There's so much to learn. So, I think each time we go through the budget process, we can learn, and then I think it's incumbent upon us to think about, that there's other ways we want to try to front-end conversations of giving other strategic direction to the manager's office, so that, you know, let's say we could go back in time, and we had this conversation five months ago, maybe we would all rally around IT and say, for sure, for sure, we better see it in there. And so, that's a process item that we can look at later. What's really, I guess, high in my mind is, we've talked a lot about response times to issues, or kind of rate of service that we, our citizens expect, and this idea of a safe and functional city, for sure. I mean, who could argue with that? And, and at the same time, we have some really pressing issues in our community that I think we're pretty slow on our response time. So, looking at the aggressiveness in which we can take on affordable housing, just as one idea, is that if we, it's true, our, our city will continue to work on that, and we do that in partnership with a larger community, it's not on the shoulders of the city. And yet, what I'm starting to think about is, okay, would I be more happy to see the lawn mowed so perfectly in our community, or would I be okay with it maybe being mowed just a little bit less, and knowing that in 2019, we got 91 people housed somewhere? And I, you know, I'm going to be looking at those numbers with the city manager. But, we'll always have champions for safe and functional communities, and economic development, and, and growing our downtown, and I've been a strong supporter of that. I'll continue to be a strong supporter of that. What we don't have are maybe enough of the emphasis on some of the folks that haven't had the champions consistently in their court, and just looking at that as a different way to look at response times in our community. So, I know that, and, and the other thing is, if we do go to a referendum, you know, essentially, that may not be for two years, maybe a year, two years, three years. So, I think about, okay, I can understand that on a calendar, and then there's a hard part of me that's like, every day that passes on a calendar, somebody else is living in their reality, that's less than ideal. And can we help change that for some folks? Not for everybody, but can we start training the UO on that? So, those are on my mind. I would have a couple of staff questions, if that would be okay. I would ask you about the body cameras. You've talked about them the other night, and if I remember, the dollar amount was around $500, uh, $500,000. I just wondered if there's any other way we could phase those in, where maybe it's a lower dollar amount, where it's maybe for shift officer? I, I just wonder if there's another way we could approach that incrementally versus everybody have a camera?
That's one option, for sure, to, you know, pick out the different divisions and prioritize who gets the cameras. Unfortunately, a bulk of the cost is in the storage, the IT involvement, the actual infrastructure of that product to support it, to make sure it works. So, that initial payment is, you know, is to get the program started. It's the yearly $250,000 to $300,000. That's more the licensing per item, and the storage fees of the video. So, as we add cameras, that, you know, we have more videos, that increases the cost. But surely, we can look at a, you know, at a phased-in project that's going to be less, but, you know, I don't know how much substantially less it would be.
So, there's, you, you buy the system, and there'll be an upfront cost for the system, and then there's a per-camera cost that goes with it. But, so, I guess we don't know what, I mean, if we were to, you know, parse it out with 25, or 30, or 50 versus 10.
Good. So, Chief, a question on that. Is there, is there, you get a lot of grants, police department gets a lot of grants. Is there ever an opportunity to get any state or federal grants for something like that? Is that, or that they may, that might come along, where that would help?
Yeah, and, and they do come along, but they're, you know, you find out about them as a year ago, so we can't say that there is going to be one in two years, or three years. It may come next year. It just depends on what money is available, usually at the federal level. So, that's part of the challenge. Again, that money, too, is to kick off a program and not that sustaining year after year money as well. So, it's just a long-
But it is, it is something that we would monitor, and if there were, if there were grants that were available, it's certainly something we'd explore and look at.
There's currently legislation in the state that's going to dictate some requirements for police departments of whether they have them, and kind of minimum standards. And so, we have been watching that closely, and we expect to see some type of legislation in the next year or two, which will give us some guidance, and maybe a timeline of which might be mandated.
And do you anticipate, if that happens, that each government body has to provide their own funding for that, or it's going to be a mandate plus funding, or an unfunded mandate?
Should we take a guess?
Does the body cam have a crystal ball? Yeah.
Right. The funding is not automatic, even when they mandate things. Hopefully, they do, you know, to recognize the challenges that communities are going to face, because it's very expensive, but it's, it's not something that's cheap.
Is that, is that something that would qualify for CIP funding versus operational funding?
The cameras themselves would, but not, but the bulk of the cost, again, is the ongoing support and storage fees, which is $250,000 to $300,000 a year.
And I don't want to put Kelly on the spot without having some warning, but there are some monies that we have been setting aside for this program, if we were able to get the long-term funding. We've got some CIP money, I believe.
We do have some, but it's not, wouldn't cover it. It was, it was literally for the equipment, nothing else. So, no storage fees or anything were in that. So, there, there isn't enough money in there to cover that. I have been talking to IT for a while about it. We kind of, I met with Bob Nelson a couple, like, last month, and we're kind of looking at January timeframe, just, just kind of, we want to look at some companies to get a better idea of the costs, so we can put it in the CIP, a real cost for the CIP portion. Obviously, there's going to be the operating portion, too.
Thank you. The other, I think my last question, we'll need to, and everybody, is to ask our library director, just about, are there any chief, to ask our library director, just about, perhaps, strategies that a library might be able to help our community on, specifically around engagement and/or helping folks to help their community, knowing that a lot of people do utilize the library on a daily basis, who are kind of transitioning through that. Thank you, Terry.
The library seats about 1,200 people daily, so it's, we have a diverse community of library users. And after I received your email, I tried to put together a whole of ideas that we've been talking about, and one is a community resource supervisor, which we could call it safety and security, but this seems a little more friendly. And that position would be needed to help people navigate through the library. We certainly have a lot of challenges, and we need someone who can de-escalate, de-escalate the situation at times, and help convince people to get the resources that they need, and work with community service workers, and staff, and police department, to ensure a safe and positive library experience for all. In 2017, just, I happen to remember this number off the top of my head, we had 180 incidents from January to August, and I can get you more updated information on that. And that is, goes from anything from drug use, to sex trafficking, to abuse of language, and so on and so forth. So, we believe that having a full-time person and presence in the library could help not only monitor the onsite use of the library, but also prevent and curb some unwanted behavior. We know that studies have shown that if there's someone greeting you at the front door, getting to know you, and building that community relationship, that, that people are more likely to succeed in the environment they're walking into. And I believe that will spill out into the community, if we can set that tone. You know, I agree, because there are so many people that are passing through. And then working with those service groups, and with the emergency technicians that we call upon, it would save our staff a lot of time. Our staff is not necessarily, we didn't go to library school and learn active shooter preparedness and mental health first aid, but we have been taking those trainings, of course, on necessity. By the time that we spend troubleshooting behaviors, and from petty things to more, more extreme incidents, it would, it would save the entire organization time. So, that is the one position that I think has some merit. And then the other one is something that we've been, we've been really working on, turning outward into the community. So, libraries, over the years, the traditional library is more focused inward, but we're really trying to engage the community more and more. And this past year, we put a lot of emphasis on outreach services, and being able to build on that. Particularly, we've identified early literacy needs for preschool students or children. We know that, that disadvantaged homes have a 30 million less words by the age of three years than his or her peers, and this is called the word gap. So, 80% of the brain is hardwired by the age of three years, and the word gap has a direct link to school readiness, and ultimately, the achievement gap. So, by supporting parents, guardians, and caregivers, we can help to focus on the importance of early literacy and brain development, thereby investing back into our community, and looking long-term about the type of community we want, and the type of people we, we want in our community, and the level of education, and accountability. So, that person would work with a group that we already have a partnership with, the Early Literacy Coalition of Greater Chabola Valley. We're working on a campaign called Talking is Teaching, and that is building on early literacy concepts, pre-reading skills to young children through reading, writing, singing, talking, and playing. And we have a 25-hour-a-week staff member who puts half of her time into outreach. So, it's not always her going out, but she's doing the coordinating and the arranging, gathering materials, and activities to bring out to the preschools, the daycares, school libraries, and after-school YMCA. So, you can imagine going from 12 hours to 40 hours per week. That would have a big impact on what we can do and what we need. So, thank you.
Any other?
I just want to respond to that. When I go to the library, which I frequently, it's apparent outside and inside what gracious hospitality you provide to people who have barriers. And I, I just, I don't think that the community as a whole has any idea the depth of services that you're providing. And those used to really be in other pockets of the community, not sort of, I really have to congratulate you and us as a community for at least being compassionate enough to not just shut the door a lot.
I think I, I have to also clarify that behavior, there's not, inappropriate behavior is not allowed in. And we have really stepped up our, our procedures and policies. We have scripts, we've done training within our staff, we've spent hours, hours on refining that. And what I will say, though, I think what you're noticing in what appears to be homelessness and, or at least poverty, but we don't discriminate for any reason. And so, anyone who comes through the doors and is, you know, there for a purpose, we, there is no reason that we would attract them.
And I think, wasn't it the case in the homeless meeting that was on Thursday, last Thursday, whenever it was? Identifying those gaps when there are no services in the community, and people just go to the doors that are open. So, again, we have, we have the opportunity to do it in different ways. But I just, I think we're doing a very good job, and there's other ways that we could really improve the, the resources that families have for children.
The, the library is located directly between two services, and they're, one closes their doors, and the other one hasn't opened, so we're community talking around.
That, that's the conversation we had on that, the homeless thing, when some of the business people came in there, and we, we heard a lot of, a lot of feedback, that a lot of people, you know, go to the library because of that, which is unfortunate. But, to me, based on what I'm hearing here, your first position is in regard to this, and then all the other information is in regard to this as well. And, and to me, it almost sounds like the library is becoming more than about books, it's almost becoming a social services agency. And I, and I'm concerned about that, community-wide. I, I don't know, I don't know that that's the mission, and I guess that, that's a concern I'm hearing.
Yeah. So, we've been very, very careful about mission creep, and I think social services would be handing out food and blankets and troubleshooting problems. But our, our job is to make sure that everyone in the library has good experiences, safe experiences. So, when someone needs assistance, we can ask for a door, or do that, or, or, I don't see that we're doing any kind of social services work. It is our job to help people navigate through the resources that are available in the community, so helping them to find resources, services, or food shelves. That is our job, is really information help for the community. So, I'm not sure where that distinction or confusion is. Is there any more information you could give that, that we need to have?
I think you talked about a few different, different items on there, but if you were to, I mean, why do you need the security officer there?
Um, why do we need the security officer?
The first position you were talking about.
Yeah, because people come in and either have some substance abuse or mental-
Yeah, because people come in and either have some substance abuse or mental health, whatever reason, it escalates further in the library, so they may have confrontation with someone in the room, so we can't turn people out before they can misbehave, we do banning, we have a lot of banning, and we suspend uses.
Is there any membership, membership for the library, that there used to be, you used to have a library card or something, or just a chip of books?
A library card doesn't get you in the door.
But to pick up on a point that Pamela was making, you can be banned from the library, and they have a process for doing that, and it, I can tell you it is used, and there's some guidelines around that, so, you know, you don't have to show your card to get in, but there are people, if they've exhibited certain behaviors that, you know, don't meet the norms to make it a facility that is welcoming for everybody, then they're asked to leave for a period of time, and depending on the infractions, that time can vary.
Yeah, and we send a banning report to our police liaison once a month, and we meet with the liaison once a month, and.
But you're, you're right, you're in a tough spot, you are in between two services, so it's a very tough spot.
Yeah, and you'll also notice even just outside, which is difficult for a librarian to go out and say, move it along, sir, you know, you know, I'll do that, but most of my staff is not comfortable.
It's not what you were trained to do.
What did you go to library school for? Anything else?
Yeah, I guess I, I just want to go back and maybe reform my comments, I didn't mean that the library shouldn't or, but in my professional practice since the late eighties through the nineties, there would have been more generous public funding to support early childhood education in home family services to encourage reading, that now is just ending up because they're coming and they're wanting to use these services, and that is part of it, but it used to be a much more generous community service than we don't know, so I just think, good for us that we're still supporting families that are in the education.
I just had a quick question, you know, for these, I guess for both of these positions, and especially for the community resource supervisor, how would you see that changing, like the advance that you have for police or EMS calls, do you think it would reduce that, or?
Oh, I would definitely hope for that, it would be one of the outcomes, by having someone who has the same training, or at least some of those initial trainings, that at least have the de-escalation skills and the convincing to provide resources, that takes a special, it's a new skills to, because we offer those skills, how may I help you, but there's a lot of intrepidation or pushback on that, I've already been kicked out of positive avenues or.
So it's a different kind of problem-solving apparatus that you're imagining, but I'm wrong.
Unless there's anything else?
I appreciate that.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven one five eight three nine five zero six seven, or online at valleymediaworks.org.